I'd like to call the Vision Department, Board of Trustees, me and order. Audience members, if you want to sign on the sheet provided at the registration table, citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak on their item seat. Roll call.
Keith King.
Present.
Jim Moore.
Here.
Mike Streeter.
Here.
And Mike Welch.
(inaudible). United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next Republican involvement hearing, meeting on Lake Shore Drive. Chuck, can I tell us what's going on?
Want to take that?
Sure. Tim Moir is here from Donahue and Associates to present a public information meeting for Lake Shore Drive overpass, as we all recall that project. Basically, and you probably do a better job explaining this than I do, but there was some federal dollars granted to the village to do that overpass design construction, $1.2 million, I believe is the number. At the time, we spent some of that money designing the bridge and overpass. And as part of that, the railroad decided at one point that they weren't going to be involved in promoting the project anymore, so the overpass really wasn't going to happen anymore. But as part of that, those grants monies that we got, in order, if we didn't build the bridge within 10 years, we had to pay that money back. So, we were able to switch this to a right-of-way preservation study, and Tim can take over from here when I'm done. But by doing that, we don't have to pay that money back if the bridge doesn't get built. So, that's what the process is. This public information meeting is for, basically, we're adopting a new village map to preserve that right-of-way. But with that, I'll turn it over to Tim, because he can explain it a lot better than I just did.
Can I ask one question for you?
Yeah.
So, you said you're going to convert it to this other type of construction?
Right-of-way preservation.
Okay. Is that a done deal, or do we have to apply for it? Do you get approved for that?
No. That would be, as soon as the environmental document is approved, which this meeting is required in order to get the environmental document approved, at that point, the map can be filed with the Register of Deeds, and then that can become your official map. But I'll get into that as we go forward. For anybody that's here tonight for the sole purpose of this agenda item, I appreciate you coming out. What I want to do is just give you a brief history of how we got to this point. The design of this project began in 2009, and we submitted preliminary plans to the railroad in 2012. Now, that was after we did all the environmental investigations, the archaeological, the historical, hazardous materials, and wetland investigation. So, we came up with what the impacts would have been to build this project. At that point, the railroad said they would not review the plans or concur with our preliminary design until construction dollars were in place. And that is when the transportation market went completely south, and there were not construction dollars available. And at this time, we still do not know when construction dollars would be available for a project of this type. So, at that point, that happened to coincide with the same time that the OCR order of having a quiet zone expired, and that was when the village decided to close the street. So, we're at the point now that the street isn't there, and if you can't show that you need to have the street in place, how can you show that you need to have the overpass there? So, there were a lot of ifs and buts that went into, how are we going to get this funding in place? So, it was at that time that the village decided, let's use all the environmental investigations that we had to this point, and let's look at updating our official map so that we can preserve this corridor should it be needed in the future. And that's the route they're taking now. By formally recording the environmental document, and by updating their plat, or their official map, they will not have to pay back any of the design funds that have been incurred to date for all those investigative studies that happened for the environmental efforts. So, today's meeting, this part of the agenda, this item, is required in order to fulfill the environmental document, and to show that we've had the environmental process, and let everybody know where we're at. What I'd like to do quickly is just show you what the design would have been, and then from there, we can...
Nick, do you want to explain something?
Yep.
So, what the project was set before is that we were going to start at the intersection on the south side, and we were going to angle the road around and have the shortest perpendicular crossing with the tracks and the rail yard as we could. And then we were going to swing back around and tie down and tie into Highway 45. The impact of that is, because we have to be so high over the railroad tracks, we were pretty far up in the air, and it took quite a while to get down. So, we were looking at, on each side, what you see on there in red is the bridge. On each side of that, for quite a distance, we had retained fill with retaining walls to minimize the footprint. It was still an expensive project. The project, right now, if we would build it today, would be $12.5 million. But it also, at the time, was deemed necessary because of the fact that, because of the emergency vehicles not being able to cross the track all the time because of these, the trains always blocking the intersection. And now, of course, they're looking at having the crossing at N to the north, so that alleviates some of this issue. So, we'll see how everything plays out in the future. But the intent now with this project is, moving forward, if it's determined that a crossing is still needed here, the village would be able to buy any of the lands around Lake Shore Drive when they become available for sale. Their intent is not to actively purchase these lands. They would only purchase them when they would become available on the market, if that. But what this does is, it gives them the right to do so without violating any federal funding requirements. So, should a project come forward in the future, they can look at it and say, yeah, all of these lands were acquired legally, they went through the proper process to be able to buy these. So, at this time, the village doesn't plan to call anybody and say, we want to buy this. It would be, if they ever think they've got a chance to get the construction funding again, and they see that something's coming up on the market, then if it makes sense, legally, they could acquire the lands and not violate any of the federal acquisition laws. So, that's kind of where we're at with that. These were all in the handouts that I put out there for you. Just a quick summary, what we had laid out originally would have impacted about a half an acre of wetlands. They were not considered high-quality wetlands, but they are still wetlands, and those would have been mitigated. And should this project ever go forward, those are still wetlands that we would need to follow all the DNR regulations and still mitigate that. Through the investigations, there were no archaeological or historic sites within the project boundary. There were a couple hazmat concerns, but none of that matters at this time. That's something that would all be dealt with later. As far as the project schedule moving forward, today fulfills the public involvement requirements. And as part of the handouts that were here, there are comment forms on there. You can either leave those in the engineering office's drop slot tonight, or you can mail them to the address that's on there, or you can email them to the email address that's on there, however you would like to have your comments be part of the official record. The environmental document will be submitted about two weeks after all the comments are in, sometime in March. We're hoping that we will have the environmental document approved in May, and then in June, the village would be able to file the updated map. At this time, there is no design schedule, there is no construction schedule, and with the improvements that are going to be happening on N to the north, there's a good chance that that may not happen. But what this does is, it gives the village a chance to make sure that they don't have to repay the design dollars, but it also gives them the chance that, in the future, if they decide they need this corridor, they can go out and acquire property as it becomes What I have shown up there is part of the handouts you had. That's the first page of the updated map. And then, that would be the second page. I know it's very hard to see up here, it's a lot clearer on the handouts that you were given. If you have any questions when you're looking at this, feel free to give me a call, or feel free to talk to Chuck or Nick. They will walk you through and explain what the thoughts are. It winds up becoming a bigger footprint than what was originally anticipated because of the fact that we have to have such a clearance over the railroad, and that's the reason why they're preserving a larger area, because by the time they tie down, some of the side roads and some of the access connections become unfeasible. You can't make those connections anymore. So, that's kind of where we're at, and like I said, the village has no plans to actively acquire land at this time. If the timing ever makes sense, what this does is, it gives them the ability to do so. They're not going to be sending you letters, and they're not going to knock on your door and say, we want to buy this property. So, I don't know that I have a whole lot more to offer than that.
Could you just elaborate maybe a little bit on the properties that are affected by this? What this means for that property as far as their current zoning, current building, you know, what they're able to do with the property, along with, when you say the village acquiring the property, explain how that process works?
Right now, it doesn't change your property at all. It doesn't change whether or not you can sell it, it doesn't change how it's zoned, it doesn't change your assessment rates or your anything. All this does is give them the ability to, should you put it on the market, they would have the ability to purchase the land without impacting any federal guidelines. There are a lot of rules and stipulations in place where municipalities, counties, cities cannot purchase land for a right-of-way, or a road project until all of the upfront design is done and the environmental process has been gone, has been done, so that they can prove that they're not going into it with a bias, they're not going into it saying, this, well, we already bought this land, so this is where we have to build it. So, that, and what we're showing now is, they already did the corridor analysis, they showed that, for the village, it makes the most sense to build the overpass at this location. But that doesn't mean that it's going to happen, especially because there's not construction dollars. But it isn't going to change the assessed values of the property, or what they're zoned at, or what you can build, or what you can add on. It doesn't mean that you can't sell it. You could decide to sell your property, and the village could say, well, at this time, we don't want to buy it, because we still don't see construction dollars available. So, they can say, that's it. You know, go ahead, sell it, good luck, and there will be, you know, nothing. So, I don't know if there's anything else, anything else you think I should touch on?
I think that, there was a couple of questions, and I think they related to, you know, I think everybody maybe is not afraid, but concerned that now this means we can come and take your property. It doesn't mean this at all.
No, 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 no.
If you put it up for sale, if you decide to sell your property, we have the opportunity to purchase it at whatever you're asking for, or negotiate with you.
Right.
It doesn't mean...
It doesn't mean they can buy it for less, it doesn't mean they can lowball you. It still has to all go through the same right-of-way appraisal process. All this means is that, should a road go through here in the future, the federal government, if they have federal construction dollars, can look at it and say, they followed the process, they didn't lowball anybody, they didn't buy right-of-way telling the village that it was going to be for a different reason, and now they're going to use it for a road when maybe you would have thought it was going to be a park, or whatever. It just tells you that this corridor is going to be preserved at this point for roadway purposes.
This is only the properties east of Indiana, right?
Yes.
Yep, they're all identified on those maps.
Yes, and they're on the, they're on the handouts. If you didn't get one, feel free to, I'm going to leave those tonight. But yeah, there's nothing, nothing west of Indiana. And it all, and it stops at Highway 45. It's just in between Indiana and Highway 45. Anybody else have any questions they would like to ask? Yeah?
Yeah, see, this mile lot here, the triangular lot here, what does this signify, like?
That would show where the slope intercept would be if they built the bridge. So, if they would build the bridge, they would need to buy that triangular lot.
Yeah, well, this lot's for sale now.
So, if they wanted to, they could buy it. So, what that means is they could...
Doesn't mean you have to buy it.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. It doesn't, they don't have to acquire any of the lands. What that means is, if in the future, they see that construction dollars are going to be available, or they feel there's a really good chance they're going to be available, then they could purchase the land as it becomes available on the open market. But I don't think they will do that at all until they would ever think that construction dollars are in place.
This is a question out of the truck, and I'm not sure if we were awarded two grants that, one or two we had to pay back, is that correct, or both?
Both.
No, but we had to pay back money, and how much money was that?
We didn't pay any back.
I understand that, but what did we have to pay back?
What did we invest in this, about 1.5?
No, it wasn't that much. It was about $500,000, with all the environmental studies, all the preliminary design, all the survey.
And we had 1.2, and you're correct, we had two different federal earmarks.
Yeah, and there were 1.2 million in earmarks, but 600-some-thousand of that was slated to be for construction.
Which we didn't use.
Which, yeah, obviously wasn't used. And I want to say that now the total's going to be like $490,000, of what'll actually be charged against that earmark. It's one of those weird things with roadway projects, is the survey, the environmental process, the hazardous materials, the wetland delineation, that all takes a lot more money than actually designing the road does.
Let's say we would have went through with this process eight, nine years ago. We would have had to do this anyways, wouldn't we? Is that correct? Let's say if we would have built this eight or nine years ago, we would have had to do the same process we would do it tonight, wouldn't we?
Right. Oh, exactly. The only difference is, then it would have cost you more, because you would have had to acquire the lands.
Right now, we either do this or pay back a lot of money.
Yes, yes.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. So, I mean, we didn't really vote on anything here, but I understand what we're doing here, but that's our choice.
Right. It's either...
And there's really not a vote on this, it's just the process we're doing.
Yeah, what needs to be done now is, we need to get the environmental document approved, and then file the updated official map. Nobody has to acquire anything, nobody has to do anything, but by changing those official map boundaries, nobody has to pay anything back to the federal government.
What's that cost of the legislature facility, and maybe what's happened right now, this last part of this project?
Nothing, that's already part of the, part of the contract. Yep.
It's actually cheaper now. Like Keith mentioned, it was $5,000, now it's $490,000. So, because we changed, before we were completed, we changed the process, that it actually is cheaper now than what it was.
Yeah, we actually did an amendment to knock almost $300,000 off the design contract to stop it at this point.
Anybody in the audience have any questions?
Does it give a right of first refusal, doesn't it, when you put your property up? You have the right of first refusal?
No.
It's just open market?
It's still open market. It allows them the opportunity to purchase it, and then, should a road project come through in the future, the federal government can't say, you bought these lands illegally, or for deceitful intents to the public, that kind of thing. It allows them to buy the land if they think it's needed for those purposes.
Nothing changes on your end.
Nothing changes on your end. Should things change in the future, and they, everybody decides that they want to have a side street changed, they can still buy that land, should they want, because now they're showing that it's for roadway purposes, and things could be modified to better facilitate local traffic movement, or whatever, but it's not, nothing is written in stone at all, no.
So, it can be...
It's still a fair market trade. If somebody wanted to offer you more than what it was valued at, and they only wanted to pay, you know, what the land was worth, you can sell it to the other person. It would be up to them then.
If you were to reconfigure Lake Shore Drive and 45 intersection, this doesn't necessarily pertain to just the bridge? If you were to reconstruct that triangle piece over there in the future, you could use this right-of-way for that then?
They could, they could. And actually, that would never, that would never really impact anything, because then federal dollars wouldn't be coming into play anyways, because...
In that case, you know, there are eminent domain type processes too, where for roadways that if you need right-of-way, you can get it either right-of-way, you know, by following that process. So, because this is federal dollars, they, it's really more of a protection of the people, honestly, because it's...
Right.
To make sure we don't purchase, we don't come out and tell you, hey, I want to buy your piece of property, because, like you said, we need to, we need more park space, you know? And then we end up telling you that, and buying it, and saying, oh, actually, we're going to use this for a road. So, that's kind of why it's there, to make sure we follow the federal guidelines.
The whole idea of that is to protect you from anybody that would have a hidden agenda. And what they're saying now is, they don't have a hidden agenda. If we ever get this crossing here, this is where we want the road to be, so we just want to preserve that right-of-way, and show it that this is what we're looking for. But that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean they'll ever call you, or, it doesn't mean it's going to happen. Unless they see that construction dollars are going to become available, they probably won't move on this at all.
In the future, if this project does go forward, will any of the adjacent landowners be charged an assessment for curbing gutter and sidewalk?
I don't think so. Not if it's, not if it's a federally funded project, no.
If it's not, then possibly?
Yeah, there's no way a project like this would ever happen if it's not federally funded.
Yeah, if it's federally funded, that would all be a part of it.
Okay. You know, basically, no set.
No, not if they can ever find the construction dollars through the federal government, no.
How much would we have to pay back on that grant? All of it? Part of it, or what?
All of it.
All of it.
$490,000.
$490,000. All right, well, thank you for your time. Oh, yeah.
Name the number again, hold quick.
It's in the handout, yes. If you have any other questions, feel free to contact me.
Or me.
Yeah, or Nick, or Chuck. I will leave all the handouts here, and I'm going to send PDFs of the preliminary design and the maps to Nick, so that he can, he'll have them, whether they get posted to the website, or are just available, that's entirely up to them.
Is there a timeline on the public comment?
Yeah, February 19. So, we have, we have two weeks if you want to have comments included.
Want to talk about if they do have comments, the back sheet, and where they can...
Yeah, on the handout form, there's a, there's a comment form that, like I said earlier, you can nail that to me. You can leave it here tonight in the...
The Dropbox.
In the Dropbox. Or there's also an email address, you can just send me an email with any comments you would like to include. And if you have any questions about the handouts, just feel free to give me a call, and be happy to walk you through what's shown on there. All right, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tim.
Give Tim a couple minutes to dismantle his equipment here.
It's always easier to take down rather than just set up. It's always easier to take down when it's the setup.
That would've been every. That just makes sense. It's not bitter though. Okay. Oh, no. It's pretty much, it'll just be a time. Hold on. Wait till it's too long. Oh, he's not. That section, that section was a redo. That'll get redone here, sir. Yeah. I mean, actually, you're gonna get four or six inches of your driveway. We just didn't do it. Finally, you got it. It'll come up because you're gonna get curb and gutter at five inches of basketball. But, and then your driveway will get blended in further back. If it gets too bad, give us a call. We can throw some sand and salt. No, yeah. No, it will come up and plus your driveway needs to go back further to patch in and we'll replace the concrete. But we only just went for the joint because that's where they wanted to go to. They did saw it? But they'll, I think they gotta go and end up going back. No, that's fine. If you have any more questions, just shoot Mitch an email or give us a call.
Okay. Thank you.
I will send an email with the PDF of the flat and the display that we have. And then you can, whatever you want to do, but that way you'll have it if anybody questions.
We have any announcements? Okay, staff reports. Library, Chuck.
Heather had a couple items she wanted me to share. She said that she's working on preparing the upcoming library board meeting, which should be held on February fourteenth. She had talked about a group pain class in February. It is full. So unless somebody drops out, you're gonna have to wait till the next one. She's also working on the library's annual report.
Okay. Administrator, Chuck.
This week, I sent out the absentee ballots. February fourteenth is the spring primary. There's only two items that are on the primary ballot. One is for a judicial judge and the other is for the village president. There are three people running for the village president position. So at that election, you vote for one, one person will be eliminated, which will then carry on to the spring election, which is April third, where the new village president would be elected. Other than that, still finishing up on some year-end reporting and also preparing for the 2017 audit. Thank you.
Priest Department, Darren.
Just a couple of things. Last week, we had a couple of computers that crashed inside the PD. Chuck helped us out and they are both back in service now, so things are running a little bit more smoothly for us. And over the weekend, obviously, with the snow event, everybody's heard about the several tragic accidents throughout the county. I'm happy to say that locally, we did not have a single traffic incident as a result of the snow. So kudos to the motorists for slowing down and recognizing the bad conditions. That's all I have.
Thank you, Darren.
You missed Jake.
Thank you. This past weekend, we went down to Campbell's Ford to do live burn training at their training facility. So we had three, four vehicles down there. It's good to get the guys some live fire training. A lot of guys only get that when they're in school. So it's a good refresher. We had a couple issues with vehicles charging in the bay. And as a result of that, we found out that the alternator on five oh four was bad. So we had to order a new alternator for five oh four. I didn't see it in the invoices here, so it must be coming out the next time. We completed our EMS refresher last weekend. So I saw that invoice in here. That's from Steve Metz. He did a great job, so thanks to him. And it was a pretty good deal for the price instead of going through a technical college. And that is all I have.
Thanks, Jake. Public work, Nick.
All right. Technology's not working for me today. We've had a couple of inquiries recently about a couple of different developments. And it looks like we'll have planning commission meetings both this month and next month for two separate possible developments. One of them, we're talking about the rezone tonight, later on for the reading of the rezone. So that's exciting. Couple of construction, likely construction to happen on both sites, depending on what planning commission decides to do on both of them. As, you know, both of them, one needs a rezone, one doesn't need a rezone. Both likely need special use permits, so depending on how that process goes, see where that goes. School district has been in contact with us through their consultant for the Friendship Learning Center renovations. Lately, we've been discussing the stormwater. That's kind of in an area of our village that we have some issues with the storm sewers around that area. So obviously, we're looking at this very closely. Ultimately, it's probably gonna help because they're gonna slow the water down from what it's doing now. However, there's a few concerns that our consultant had with their calculations on their site itself, which may cause some issues on their site, so they're recalculating some of those things and running it through the models again. So hopefully, that'll be taken care of. And then the village's storm sewers will be less gnacked in that area after they're done, which is a great help to us. So it actually is as far-reaching all the way up to the area of Bay, Thirck and Sheplo, where we had, I mean, that's stained storm sewer getting backed up all the way down into the school. So hopefully, it'll help alleviate some of that because we have, that floods almost every time we have a really, really major rain. And as I mentioned, I was out most of the last week with the flu, so I don't have a lot to report, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Nick. Consent agenda. Approve the minutes at the following village board meetings, January fifteenth and January twenty-second, twenty eighteen. And approve invoices and authorize checks to be drawn on the respective funds in the amounts indicated for January twenty-ninth and February fifth. January twenty-ninth, general fund, forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and four cents. Library fund, one thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, fifty-three cents. EMS fund, three thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty cents. Capital project, twenty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand. Water department, three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Wastewater department, one hundred and eleven thousand, seventy-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Stormwater fund, four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents. For a grand total of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. And for February fifth, general fund, ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents. Library fund, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and eight cents. EMS fund, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents. Wastewater department, six thousand, five hundred and ninety, sixty-seven dollars and ten cents. Wastewater department, fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Community development, twenty-six dollars and eighty cents. Stormwater fund, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. For a grand total of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. Motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve it as read.
Second. Motion by Will, second by Strier to approve the consent agenda. Questions?
I guess I'll start off with a few. We're going at the check dated the one twenty-nine eighteen on page six. What was the Ross Boring Cable for in McInnesville, Minnesota? What'd that involve, Nick?
We had a water main break. And due to the nature of the gas and I think fiber optics, you know, it was frozen ground, we hired them to have their hydro excavator there on site to help us get around that stuff.
Okay. I guess I have another quick question. Same page, Chuck, the Valley Pass Control. Why is it a large number, almost two thousand? Is that an annual fee for all that?
Yes.
Could I also say?
Yeah, we have, they do library, community center, and the municipal office.
Thank you.
Nick, what went on at the Friendship Learning Center with that plug sewer with man plumbing?
So there was a, they had, their sewer was backing up at the school. They called the plumber. Plumber came in, televised it, tried to clean it out. Couldn't get it to go. Thought he saw a piece of pipe in the lateral blocking some flow. They had hit, apparently had hit a cleanout with their lawnmower this summer. And as they started talking about this piece of pipe in there, they thought, well, we must've knocked off a piece of pipe and went down into the sewer and it's blocking our sewer, so they hired a man to fix it. Well, turns out, when he dug it up in the street where it was plugged, it wasn't that at all. It was a problem with our sewer that basically collapsed in the street and was blocking the flow for years because you can see like the stains when you open up a sewer, that there's stains on it from where the flow has been. And it, over the years, had been settling and eventually settled enough that it just basically blocked off their sewer. So at that point, we, you know, we agreed that it was our problem and we were gonna pay for it. And it was one of those bitter cold weeks we had and they were out working in the street and hydro excavating. And it was a mess and it was an expensive mess. It's, we end up footing the bill.
Anybody else? If not, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go forward. Mr. Carey. Okay. Administration item number one, discussion of possible action on continuing the village transport services with the review of the last six months.
When we first talked about the transport service, we agreed that after six months, we'd review just to see how the new service is progressing. Jake did a nice job with some help with his staff, put together this summary that's on the spreadsheet that's following the write-up. What we were able to do, because it is February fifth, we're able to include even January's in there, which could help sell, send, or at least tell what that trend is. So in the upper left-hand corner, you see the revenues. And it's not only the interfacility, but now because the, we have staff here seven AM to seven PM, they are available for backup to the nine-one-one calls or five hundred. So many of those calls were passed before just because we didn't have staff to respond to them. So there is revenue that we've gained just because of having staff there. And so that just shows the trend as it's growing from July, which was initial startup, but then as it grows until, as you'll see some of the numbers. To the upper right-hand side, we've got the expenses. And that lists everything that was put in, not only ongoing expenses after the initial startup, but the initial startup, which you'll notice that I've taken the total expenses, which was at sixty-six thousand, five sixty-two, and took out the expenses that we felt were one-time shots. They were something that happened when we first initially started up the service itself to net down to the fifty-two thousand, nine-ten. If we just look at the raw numbers between the fifty-four, eight sixty-eight, which was the revenue side, and the fifty-two thousand, nine-ten, it does show that we, they were making, it was, we still were in the black for that period of time. I then just thought, rather than just, because of the slow start, just took the last two months, December, January, and said they're averaging about eleven thousand, one ninety a month? Based on those two months, December and January. If you took that time seven months, they'd have about seventy-eight thousand, three hundred for seven months. If I compare that seven months to the seven months of expenses of the fifty-two thousand, it does show that it is definitely a service that is, is making money. Some of the other things, though, that do play into it, because the way Jake and his staff have set this up is the fact that they are firefighter one certified, meaning they can respond to fire calls as well, which is again, an added benefit to having staff here between seven AM and seven PM. And it indicates the difference in response times. It's one point nine minutes with people here, four point six eight with staffs not here. So there again, it's something that definitely, response times are significantly less. The next little segment is just saying how many people actually responds to these calls. Back in two thousand and fifteen, the average was four point two, two thousand and sixteen, four point nine. Now in two thousand and seventeen, when we have staff here, that I think is, if I correct me if I'm wrong, it's the whole year. So it's half.
Correct.
That response is all the way up to eight. So there again, just showing that we have more people to respond.
I can go through the rest of this.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that I should let you talk about this so you're the one who put it all together, so, sorry.
The next section is the number of runs we've received each month. So the first column is gonna be combined five hundred and five oh two. So you can see the increase there. I just wanted to draw a picture from what we used to run every month till now. And then it goes into the interfacilities, that five oh two runs monthly. And then nine-one-one, that five oh two has been taking, and then the total for five oh two. The right-hand column are the non-responses, so calls that five oh two did not respond on. And as you can see, there's quite a few interfacilities and nine-one-ones still left out that we couldn't go to. Mainly because of staffing, there were some interfacilities, as you can see underneath the three columns, that were canceled by the facility that requested us, or the fact that five hundred was out on a call and five oh two was covering our nine-one-one service area. And then underneath that, there were three that were canceled due to medications that were being administered to the patient. Now, we did get approval through our medical director to add, was it ten?
It's eight. And then on addition to that eight, all the medications that we previously carried as paramedics.
So the hospital, at first, didn't have really an algorithm sheet to follow to know what they can call us for. So after talking with Brenda Kissinger from St. Agnes, who is our EMS liaison, kind of came up with this algorithm. We wrote out every medication that we can already give, plus the eight additional that we were approved to give through our medical director. And now that's all written down on a piece of paper. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on what medications the three interfacilities were canceled that were being administered. But that would most likely alleviate that problem of not being able to take them. So yet obviously, there's intangibles. There's a lot of stuff that I think is going better back in our department. As keeping people busy, having tasks given to the employees that are working here now, since we do have eight more employees that are working part-time, then our department looks a lot better. So that's pretty much much of this sheet. I also did have Chuck print off the budget from last year and kind of decided just to watch the year-to-date actual because the other numbers are off because of spending and getting more money. So this year, we budgeted for a deficit and then came up year-to-date with a positive number, which is a good thing. Obviously, you can see the numbers for five oh two. So adding that money in definitely helped on the revenue side of things. When you look at the ambulance, the first page, we were almost.
Who were you talking?
The one that was.
Uh, this one. All right. So page one, right?
Yep.
This is both ambulances combined. So the money that we actually billed out, you know, is obviously a portion of the ambulance fees, which was, you know, sixteen percent higher than normal. So we grew in that area. And then if you look at the third page, it's gonna be where you'll see the net revenue over the expenses. And the forty-one underneath the variance is because we did not add or put in the budget the wages mainly for five oh two. That's why that number's so high.
I think when we initially talked, we had estimated the cost of startup, what it would be, about sixty thousand for the six months.
Yeah, yep.
Good report, Jack.
Thank you. Adam helped me out quite a bit on this.
One other thing, you know, you touched on the fact that, you know, we increased the medications that you can administer, meaning that they are eligible to take more transport. But you're doing a number of other things too to expand the transport service. Can you touch on some of those too?
Uh, yeah, we've contacted, no, that doesn't matter. We've contacted Wapon to try to get a contract set up with them. So we would essentially be first call for any interfacility. And then we would also be taking. So we would essentially be first call for any interfacility and then we would also be taking round trips. So we'd take people to an appointment and then back to the facility. Obviously, there'd be, like, an amount of time that we would only stay at these appointments. We wouldn't sit there for two or three hours. We would sit there for up to, I think we wrote, 45 minutes and then we'd come back to the station. Just to try to get that ambulance back in service in case of a 911 call. Obviously, adding the extra medications is a big one. What else is there?
Call the continued growth in relationship with hospitals.
And contacting more places, I guess.
More medications. What they did was basically take some of the more commonly transported medications that we were not eligible at the time to do and have the capacity to do that, which in the long run is going to increase, increase overall, what we're going to be able to transport, increasing our numbers. And then we have other contacts that are out there, yes, Wapon is one of them. We're into Alora, Oshkosh, working on the Montalex Surgery Center, getting in contact with them to set up a contract to transport patients that might not be responding so well, coming out of anesthesia and taking them to the hospital for further care and observations. But just working with the contacts that we have made both locally and within the hospital systems, we keep getting more and more referrals of you need to go talk to this facility because they have a need for it, go talk to this facility, they have a need for it. We don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but as things keep progressing, people keep calling us for our services.
Yeah, thank you. It seems like it's been going great. Some of the medicines that you were talking about, that the three medicines, would that be like morphine and stuff like that probably that patients are administering? Because I know you can administer that, I'm just curious.
Blood's a big one.
Blood, okay.
Antibiotics.
Antibiotics.
Seizure medications, TPA is a stroke medication that we can now transport that will.
So we just needed, we just needed clearance from our medical director. As paramedics, you're all trained and everything on how to handle all of that stuff.
And a lot of it was being, I guess, unclear at the hospital on what we can all take and cannot take.
Right.
So.
I'd just like to say, you know, I think you guys have done, and ladies, have done a great job, you know, with this, building it. I mean, you guys did it from scratch and brought it to us, you know, as an idea of a way to generate revenue and it's really worked out very well. I, at this point, I'd like to make a motion after Mike, or I will make a motion that, that we continue this service.
There's, there's actually like three options, Keith.
Yeah, I know, I realize that.
Okay, I'm just wondering which one.
Approve, continue transports and service.
Number one?
Option one.
Give me a second. Which option?
Option one. I mean, it's a, we're making money. I mean, and there, we're, our calls, our response time is, is, is down. It's a win-win.
Can I say something I don't?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'm waiting for the second, but wait, no, there's not a second. I mean, I really think this is a great program. You guys reinvented the department. I think it's real positive. You find a niche out there, you guys are doing a lot of good things. But I like option number three, continue with another review in six months, try to close that gap of that $40,000 that, that we have in that.
Well, yeah, something maybe.
I can touch on this too.
Well, I, I think you guys are doing wonderful.
I plan to add this into my essentially running sheet with these numbers as we move forward here, with the same stuff that I typically give out.
And one other question I had too is, how long is this 502 going to last? We got to start looking at what's it going to cost this? Now, we're putting more miles on it, we're using it more. Is it going to last another five, six years, three, four years? So we got to incorporate a little cost in to replace the 200, I think it'll be $250,000 for an ambulance, so I just, just. I think you guys are doing a lot of folks, just like two cents.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same thing about 502. How does, how's that work? Like if that, if that starts getting to the point where it's, it's, you know, becoming a lot of maintenance issues, is, is MSAC behind that to, to push like five, our number one to number two and then get a new one? Or how, how does that work? I mean, how does MSAC feel about how this program is going?
We can definitely ask them at the next meeting when we present this to them. But we're definitely watching the maintenance costs on that vehicle to see, you know, how much it's actually costing us in a year. This year, it wasn't really that bad. It was pretty much just tires.
What year is that?
2006.
Okay. We go by years on that or miles?
Ten.
When we replaced ambulances?
Ten years.
Ten years? Doesn't matter what the mileage is, that's a concern with it being a transport. I mean, you're obviously going to rack up more miles because you were saying that Oshkosh is interested in if you're looking.
We've gone down to freighter multiple times and we've put some miles on it, so.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, I like this, I like to see, I like how it's progressing. I would agree with, with Mike also that, I know Keith had made the option, option number one, but I'm more interested in number three to look at, another review in six months and that also.
Somebody make a motion.
Well, you got to wait for that one. So is that one, are you saying this motion died that Keith made since there's no second?
That's right.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion then that we go with option number three to approve the transport service with another review in six months.
Okay. Motion by Street or second by Will, who would go with option number three, approve the service with another review in six months. Other discussion? If not, all in favor of option three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Thanks for coming.
Everybody for coming.
Thank you.
Jake, can, can they administer Narcan?
Oh, yeah.
No, not yet. Okay. Discussion possible action, approving increase in the subcommittee members attendance allowance. Right now, they're allowed $10. $10 a month.
I guess I, I'm the one that brought it to attention. It's kind of, you know, it's kind of, you know, I think we could do better with that. It's been that way for a bunch of 10, 15 years. I've been as long as I've been on the board, it's been $10. I think we can increase it a little bit and maybe look at it again in a couple of years, but I'm, I'm fifteen, but.
I don't think the volunteers do the money, but.
I understand, but just, just a little Peter gas anyway, so.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is that, I mean, has that been an issue? I mean, is that, no one's, yeah, I mean, I, I agree that it's.
Some of the new employees I got didn't even know they're getting paid for it.
Yeah, I would agree though. I mean, you know, we could, we could look at the bump and then, do we have any idea what other MS balance they're paying?
Do you have a number in mind, Mike?
I would, I would throw 15 out there. I mean, it's still reasonable and it's just not a shock or something. We should look at it again in three, four years. Unless somebody thinks it should be more. I'd say at least 15.
If you want, I can survey the neighboring communities.
I, even if I know it's going to be a lot more, so I think.
I suspect it is too. I suspect so.
I would say 15, 20, but let's, I would make the motion for 15. Let's see, I can get a second to it. I'll make a motion to increase it to $15 for sitting on a subcommittee.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Will, second by King, to move the fee up to $15 per meeting. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Just a quick question that's meant to be immediately then?
Next committee meeting.
I'd say probably one, one. Why don't we do it for the 2018?
Starting in January 1. Just because everybody's budgets are going to be off now, just, you know. It's fine, I mean, you're aware of it.
You're right, we should have done that.
That's fine.
You're right, we should have done that call.
We're talking a hundred, we're talking a hundred dollars here probably.
Yeah, way to, way to screw up the budget, Mike.
Yeah, thanks.
Good job. Yeah, I don't think it'll break the bank.
Okay, item three. Discussion possible action, approving 5% match of $70,000 fire bay exhaust system grant.
I could talk about this. So we looked into getting an exhaust system for vehicles, mainly because all of our HVAC system is connected. And if we start a vehicle in the bay, and we do that every single day during rig checks, that exhaust gets up into the HVAC system and we hear about it in the back. So this would alleviate that problem. It's a 5% match, so it would be right around $3,500. But we, I believe the grant was written for $68,000. So that's a, I believe, small percentage to pay for the cost of that actual equipment.
Once you start them, you leave them in the bay?
Not typically. During rig checks, we do. Essentially, we turn them on, check all of our gauges to make sure everything's proper and where it needs to be. And then, you know, they run for 30 seconds to a minute. And we have three vehicles every day that we have to check, both ambulances and then a fire apparatus. And so that puts out some exhaust.
I think Chief Post can attest to that.
PD gets it the worst.
You do the same with your squads, don't you? I mean, and do you do them in that little garage?
No.
No?
But, and we just have, excuse me, we test ours. They do those, what he's talking about, every time a shift starts.
Right.
So they're taking that car out on the road, so they're out on the, but even, to be honest.
The pre-trip is a little bit different on a squad car than it is on a diesel truck.
Exactly, and to be honest, even when they pull them out, because they used to leave them in the garage or in the bay, and Jake's right, we pitched a fit. They pull them out on the pad, it still doesn't fix the issue because the intake for our HVAC system is up under the soffits, right outside the bay doors.
So it sucks back in.
So I actually spent last summer standing over there yelling at those guys, making them park the rigs out on the street and put cones out because it actually chokes us out back in the PD when they're doing it. So I would, I mean, not to argue, but I think they run longer than a minute at a time. I think they run a little bit longer when they do the tests, but it's bad. I mean, we actually, they brought back a CO detector. And it will actually show detectable amounts when they're doing that, so.
It's not good.
What's the likelihood?
And we don't like it either. I don't like sitting in my office smelling that, you know, just as much as anyone else in the building. What's that?
I just wondered what the likelihood of the grant.
Uh, 50/50 pretty much, it's.
I thought I'd heard from Adam, who submitted that they thought they were escalating this type of a grant request. Not saying it's still a guarantee that it may be a little priority over some of the other stuff.
Yeah.
I guess the one question that I would have is probably for, maybe you, you, is there any chance that this is going to further, that in addition of this type of system, will further the issues that we have with the HVAC now?
I think this is just a exit right at the top.
Correct, yeah, so they, there's piping that goes directly on the exhaust and then it runs a channel all the way to the door. So you literally can drive to the door, then it detaches, you know, disconnects, and all of it would come out on the north side of the building or on that pitch roof over there is where he's.
On the peak, up, up above the, the building.
Correct, yeah, yep.
We have those in our diesel shop. They hook them up. They're going to be running them in there for any, like, the time to heat them or whatever.
Yep. Yeah, we don't really like, especially during winter time, parking our stuff outside because we got a lot of water on there. And if there's water in our, in our pumps and in our discharges, that'll freeze up, crack our pipes and our discharges and then we'll be sitting there with a hefty bill, so.
Okay, any other questions? If not, uh.
Maybe I'd just add one thing. In the write-up, I did mention the fact that Jake did agree that try to absorb this 5% match in his budget. I put some other options there that possibly could use some of our fund balance to offset that $32,000 to $3,500. I'd rather try to have him squeeze something else out of the budget, so.
That's option number three.
Or two.
Or two.
Well, I just, Jake, I mean, it's, I mean, how big a, how big a squeeze would this be? I mean, that's, that's not a huge number, but I mean, I would, I would like you to see if you can fund some of it out of your budget, maybe not all of it, but I mean, you know.
Possibly, it's too early in the year to, you know, predict what is all going to transpire. If it was fall, I'd have a way better answer for you, but right now, you know, especially since we just, that alternator was pretty expensive and that takes money out of you.
Four thousand bucks, right?
I think we got it for 28.
That's crazy.
But it was shipped from pretty far away. Yeah, those are pretty high technology in those alternators for those trucks because they have to have shields and stuff for the electronics inside and it's pretty big.
Is that just the cost of the alternator or that's insulation?
Correct, yeah, no, not insulation. Rob actually put it in today. So that got done today.
Aaron? Couldn't we just, at this point, just say that we're going to try to see if the general operating budget can absorb it by the end of the year? And then if not, go back and at that time, make a determination to take money from the fund balance. We wouldn't have to make that determination right now. I, I just throw that out there because, I mean, I'm, obviously, but the PD budget has been so far under budget for the six years I've been doing this by virtue of not getting up to staff. I can't imagine not having $3,500 in the budget at the end of the year, so I think that it would be safe to kind of play a waiting game.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that, on, on three with, with, or I mean, excuse me, on two, with the rider in there that will look at it in the fall, that if the, if they, you know, if fire can absorb some of that, that they would, they would pitch in. Otherwise, I think it's something that needs to be done.
A second.
Motion by King, second by Street, or do we go with option number two? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey Jake, have you ever tried to get a grant from Alliant Energy, ever? I saw in their newsletter that they, they do a lot of community grants. I don't know if that's something you tried on, you might want to.
We've looked into it. A lot of the stuff that we're looking for is out of the price range for that grant. And we have a pretty good working relationship with Alliant, whereas if we need to do a training or get a training prop, they're pretty on the spot for coming here and doing that training. And it's kind of more towards what those grants are for.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure. I just saw that, you know, when you get that with your power bill, they always tout what they're supporting in the community. So I thought I'd just mention that to you.
Item four, discussion possible action, approving a slight change of the public administrator associate. Timetable's set for the administrative search.
You saw the email that Steve Hens from PAA had sent. He just asking if, because of him being out of town, if we could just move some of the interviews? And just kind of moving them out a week is really the way it looks, just because he will be out of town. And he felt, he felt, he felt it'd be better to have his availability around in case there were some questions.
So move them out to March 16th, 17th?
Or even the 23rd, 24th, whichever works better, so.
What days are those on?
Friday, Saturday.
It's March 9th and 10th or March 16th and 17th.
Are we still going to, are we still going to keep the, do you need to split finalists the same day or are we moving that?
Well, I think, you know, after this, the interviews with the finalists, that's when we'll determine if we're going to reopen it up, so. I saw that too and I wasn't quite sure, you know, if we stay on the original schedule and not have to re-advertise, if you want to call it that. He doesn't really put down when we'd be actually making the decisions on that, so. He doesn't really put down when we'd be actually making the decisions on that, so I think he kind of left that open because of not knowing if we had or not.
I don't have a, I don't have a, I just, I mean, we have all these people that don't do hay and that's just, that's only about, the laying, it doesn't matter, but just the other people that apply.
Do you have a preference sixteenth or seventeenth, the twenty-third and twenty-fourth?
Let me think about that.
It says ninth and tenth.
Ninth and tenth, is it?
It's like a McHale, they're here once.
The ninth and tenth is the current one.
Oh, that is the current one.
They want to move it out just one or two weeks.
That's a Saturday?
Friday, Saturday.
It says nine, ten, or sixteen, seventeen on this, yeah.
Sixteen, seventeen, we're doing Friday, Saturday, is that correct?
Yeah, yep. Remember, there was like a get together on a Friday and then the interviews on Saturday.
Um, let me think about that.
Either ones work for me, gentlemen, so.
Me too.
I don't, at this point, I don't see either one.
Mark.
Should we leave it up to Steve?
Yeah, Steve, let's shoot for the first one and then the first one over to the second one.
All right, so you can open to either one, no?
Yeah.
All right.
I just have to know, it's, I saw you put in the days.
Oh, that's right.
So it's Friday, is that an all-day thing?
That would be an afternoon thing, correct me if I'm wrong, just kind of a-
Well, you know, some of that depends because if you look on the twelfth through the fifteenth of February, the board is going to-
Select the finalists.
Is going to select the finalists. So right now, Steve is doing the reference checking and talking with some, with the candidates, you know, he's actually trying, he's going to come back with a candidate profile for each one of them.
So we're meeting next week too?
February twelfth through the fifteenth, so yes. I don't know what day that is, so I'd have to check to see when he is ready for that, so I will get that to you.
And those will be night meetings, I'm assuming?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I just want to, I, the fifteenth would work better for me, I'll be out of town, the twelfth.
I mean, the sixteenth, right?
So is this-
Twelfth through the fifteenth, which is next week.
Would be one of those days? Would, or a couple?
Just one, Steve is meeting with the-
Gotcha.
What are you talking about, the twelfth or the fifteenth right now?
Yeah.
One of those days between the twelfth and the fifteenth, yes.
Okay. And Keith said, Keith threw out twelfth to the fourteenth?
Yes, yes. Thirteenth is on Thursday, correct?
Thirteen won't work for me.
Pardon me?
The thirteen will not work.
About the fifteenth?
Fifteen works.
Fifteenth? That's the one that works for Keith.
That's one that worked for Keith.
Yes.
All right, so I'll get ahold of Steve and just plan on that, it'd be a six, six o'clock, is that fine?
Yes, for me it is, I can speak for him.
All right.
And, and we're selecting the finalists, hopefully.
Based on that, reviewing the candidate profiles to see how many you feel you want to interview.
Okay.
And the interviews will be either the sixteen, seventeenth or the twenty-third, twenty-fourth of March.
We have nineteenth, tenth and sixteenth and seventeenth.
Well, the ninth and the tenth is the current.
The current, so he wants to move those?
Move.
I'm lost here.
Look at it.
All right. I see, okay, I got it. Sixteen, seventeen would look better for me, just so you know.
March?
Yes.
Okay.
And that could be discussed a little bit more too, I mean, we've got some time in between now. How much time do you need to schedule your days?
Well, I mean, I, I'm, not a lot of people take time off this time of year, but you never know if something's happening that weekend, I'd have to try to figure out a way to switch someone or, sell the soon the better.
Sure, okay. All right, anything else on that or any night?
Okay.
Think things are going along, all right.
Did he say, he gave you any indication?
No, he just indicated he is talking to references and he actually is talking to each one of the candidates too.
So it's in progress.
If the one candidate that's a little bit far away, he's going to be meeting with him, the guy is going to be driving up and talking to him, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Section eight ordinance, discussion on ordinance four dash twenty-eighteen dash oh two. Ordinance rezoning parcels from industrial district to business district. And where is this piece of property?
I can take that, there's a map, it's the Northern Field Northern Aluminum Foundry. That piece of property has been industrial since the foundry has been there, it's never been rezoned, it probably should have been rezoned a long time ago. We propose it be rezoned to B one. The reason we proposed it to the current owner is it, B one allows for a little bit less on the setbackting requirements, a little more buildable area. It also makes no sense to have industrial zoning in the center of the business district and residential area. So we made the suggestion, because he's proposing, which will go to the planning commission at some point, some building, some sort of buildings going up there and with what he was proposing and the setbacking, it made more sense for it to be B one. As part of it, we're also asking him to join the two parcels, there's two separate parcels, five twenty-four and five oh two are the addresses, there's two, the parcel numbers are listed there in the legal. As part of the process, too, we were asking him to join those, so it's one clean piece of property. So this is the first reading of the ordinance change?
Yes.
And then in two weeks, we'll have that. In between the two zoning change ordinance readings, we're actually going to have a planning commission next Tuesday to talk about the site and layout of that, so. So quite a fast-paced project, the way it looks right now.
Okay. Okay, no action this time.
Any other questions for Nick?
Any unfinished business?
Yeah, just one, no. Go ahead, Mike. Your first question. Chuck, I was going to ask you, I know I mentioned this before, but the stuff that Stuart's put on that corner, I mean, it looks so bad. I mean, can, maybe other guys even cut the ropes just to lay that stuff down, it looks terrible. I mean, they do such a nice job by Lakeside Park and, you know, like when you go in by, by Salty's and I don't know where they found this stuff, but it, it looks terrible and I, I wouldn't want to see that again next year, I've heard a lot of complaints. Thanks.
Mike?
Yes, our next meeting, I would like to revisit item number G two because, just a little history on that because, I mean, I just brought the truck's attention, he threw it on the agenda, but it was, again, I didn't think about it, but we do approve all those increases at budget time, so I would like, we never agreed to a time period and nobody's really asking for it. I'd rather wait till next year, so bring, I'd like to bring that back and wait till budget time. Because I, I preach that and I don't want to be a hypocrite, so.
It's too late, peer pressure.
You're not talking that much.
I wasn't thinking, I wasn't, I was just, you got to pay my attention.
You're not talking that much, Mike.
That's all right.
Mike, you're not talking that much.
It's a hundred bucks.
I understand that much, but it's, that's enough.
There you go, I'll put it back.
Thank you.
Any new business? Okay, most going to closed session.[1770.87]